I was diagnosed at 65.
37, earlier than most.
Every nine minutes, someone is diagnosed with Parkinson's disease.
And every one of them can turn to the American Parkinson's Disease Association. Visit APDAParkinson.org to learn more and show your support today.
Good welfare public comment. Anybody who would like to speak, please come to the mic, say your name and address, and please keep your comments in good taste. Thank you.
Jim Conore, One Day For You on the Road. Two items. One, on your docket tonight, you've got a resolution, 23057, I'm sorry, an ordinance, 23057, in connection with funding the utility building proposed to Roy Ave. And you have also a resolution approving a contract, 23R139. And I would encourage you to reject this this evening. This is again for the water department utility building over on Roy Ave. And when this first came up last July, 15 months ago, the director, Dr. DiAgostino, who's not ignorant of these matters, he said it's going to cost about $1 million. He said we weren't building a Taj Mahal that he had consulted with architects. It was about $1 million. The building alone here is coming in at $3.4 million. And when you add in the excavation and all the other work, the architects, you know, we're closing in on $4 million here for a utility building to store equipment and have some modest office space. That's a lot of money. And I think you've got to go back to the drawing board and come up with a more cost-effective solution. I mean, I think you could buy the building they are, there is now the old Janelle truck body building on Cumberland Hill Road, which is around 50,000 square feet, not 7,000 square feet. You could buy that, but closer, 3.5 million. So I would encourage you to hold off on this. The second thing, and I'll be brief. The mayor's comments I read in the Valley Breeze in connection with Community Care Alliance and Ben Lessing in particular. Look, nobody wants the homeless encumbered in their backyard. And it's a tough issue. And there's no good answer. There's really no good answers. It's hard. It's going to be managed, and it's always going to be a challenge. And it always has been. But when I read the comments in the Valley Breeze by the mayor telling Ben Lessing to take off his ballerina slippers, really? I'll use Mr. McGee's comments when he stood here about a year ago. He said it was an embarrassment. This is embarrassment. And Community Care Alliance is not responsible, and never has been responsible, for solving the homeless issue in the city of Wunsacque or anywhere else for that matter. They provide health care primarily for people that have both physical and mental health care issues. They do the best they can. They get money from lots of different sources. But their primary goal, or their primary objective, is not solving the housing crisis of the homelessness. They certainly address it to the best of their ability. But the insulting comments made by the mayor to that organization are beyond appeal. And it's an embarrassment. And I noticed the board of Community Care Alliance, many of the folks that you all know very well, wrote a letter, and they concluded with, "Name-calling, exaggeration, and making false assertions," oh, sorry, "making false accusations are not helpful." Talk about cat and obvious. They couldn't be more right. And that's a problem we have coming from this building. Exaggeration, name-calling, and making false accusations on a regular basis. That's why things don't get done in this city. That's why you don't get police contracts done after two years. That's why you don't get firefighter contracts done after a year and so many months, despite having video of us. So if you can get the contract done and get this behind us and get these guys their raises. Okay? Name-calling, exaggeration, making false accusations. Hopefully, you guys stop tolerating your stuff at some point. Have a nice Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. My name is Rhonda Sharon, 1025 Park Avenue, Wunsacque, Rhode Island. Good evening. And I know what I would typically say to you guys is like, you know, nobody comes to these meetings or speaks for fear of retribution and retaliation. And I'm here every time, as often as I can, to get on YouTube so that people can see what's really going on in this city. Just a little bit of stuff here. I got some trees this week. And they were, the ground works, they were really nice. They planted two trees in my yard. They told me it was a really funny city. They thought this was an odd place because they weren't allowed to plant trees in schools, which seemed really bizarre because I thought trees were great and, you know, good for oxygen and everything. I don't understand why we can't plant trees for free in the schoolyards. And I know that I'm not the smartest person in the room like other people here. However, I did do a little bit of accounts payable, accounts receivable, credit collection. I know it's boring to listen to me. But I took a little, kind of a little dive into the accounts payable in the agenda this week. And I noticed some things that kind of stuck out to me. And I mean, I don't know if the rules have changed, but I've always been told that it's illegal to write bad checks. And I got kind of bored after a few of them that we wrote that were non-sufficient funds, return check fees, reissue checks. I guess we're writing checks we don't have money for. Maybe that's because taxpayers were told that we were paying, I'm sorry, Mr. Lepizera, taxpayers were told that we were going to pay Mr. Lepizera $30,000 a month. And $30,000 for $18,480. So quick math, that's like a half a million a year that we're paying. I mean, if we go forward spending that kind of money. It's kind of shocking to see these numbers, you know, in a really, really poor community that we live in. Let's see, what else have I got? Oh, so I'm driving around Saturday, and I noticed these cute little bags hanging from trees near the sewage treatment plant. They look like pantyhose with, I don't know, Fabreeze pellets inside of them. Just kind of tacky, but I guess that's how you guys do things here. Also, Mr. Ward, I'm so glad that you're bringing ahead this thing about the Diggity Bus that we spent $150,000 on. I'm really happy that in the thing it says that it's for Wunsacque homeless people. So I'm happy. I'm also not really happy that women still can't use the ladies' room on the third floor like men can during public meetings. And I'm going to say that until it gets resolved that that's discrimination, that we can't, that the men's room is not locked, but the ladies' room is. That's all I have.
Thank you. My name's Timothy Delisle from Wunsacque. I am a member of the city's homeless community. And I too am quite appalled by comments that have been made lately. I'm actually quite confused as to what the city sees its role in making this problem better. Because I have seen a lot of back patting, but not a lot of results. I can tell you firsthand, there are not a lot of results. There is people out there who have it much worse than I do. And nobody's doing anything except trying to move them away, trying to move them out of the city, trying to insinuate them out of the city. And people are not going to just move out of the city. You can knock down their tents. You can destroy their property. You can arrest them. They're not going to move, but their lives are going to be in danger. They're still people. No matter what's wrong with them, they're still people at the end of the day. And nobody's doing anything about it except for the independent agency that gets blamed for the problem not getting better. And it's intolerable. And it's not okay to see people suffer and then to just be treated like refugees. We are not refugees. We are human beings. No matter if it's people who are just out here for financial reasons or because they're regrettated or because they have mental or physical issues, nobody deserves to be treated like they are less than human. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, y'all. How are you? My name is Krista Thomas-Auerz. I work at Community Care Alliance, but I'm here to speak as an individual tonight. Tim is a friend of mine and someone I admire deeply. I would just like to speak to the comments that are being made about the unhoused people in this community. I don't live in Wunsacque. I live in Worcester. It's been pointed out to me a number of times when I've spoken in this arena. But I have spent the last five years of my life getting to know quite closely the community of people who are forced to live out on the street, saying that housing is not the solution to homelessness, saying like food is not the solution to hunger. It's wrong, deeply wrong. I know that this is a problem that is impacting the city in a really significant way. But I would really urge a more human approach to this crisis. Just today, I had a person who brought their 63-year-old mother in with them who's going to be sleeping on the street tonight in Wunsacque. I have people coming in with children who are looking for help with housing. I have people who are sleeping in cars who are not even recognized by the state as experiencing homelessness. We have 75 people come in through the drop-in today. Two-thirds of those people recorded sleeping on the street. This is not a problem that's just going to go away or that you can arrest your way out of. On Sunday, when I was at Ulay Field, I had a man who's about my age tell me that he took a lethal dose of fentanyl overdosing on the park bench because he's sick and tired of being homeless on the street here. And he's been for years. And I've been doing this front-line work. I know he got paid for 10 hotel rooms. CCA has paid for dozens and dozens and dozens. We've helped hundreds of people since I've been doing this work. I'm not saying that, you know, this is an individual's, you know, problem that this agency is going to fix by itself. But I would really appreciate some more good-paying effort from the city and not just exploiting these people by walking through their tent sites with the governor. I think that's really ridiculous. I think that if someone were to walk through my living room with cameras on and police, I would probably be, you know, pre-armed by that. These people have rights. These people are human. These people have feelings. These people are deeply traumatized. And these people feel as though they're being thrown away and that they are less than human because that's how the city treats them. And when the community that I work with and that I love constantly reading comments that you make, Lisa, about their character, about the fact that they're less than human, that they don't deserve a place to go, and that they don't, you know, they shouldn't be, you know, inside during the winter. You know, Alan Shuret, who died last year in Social Park, was a friend of mine. He was someone who was very kind and who would have given his shirt off his back to help another person and something he had actually done for people. So I just want to say that, you know, I appreciate every effort that the city is making. The Diggity Bus is a step in the right direction, right? Like we need places for people so they don't freeze and die this winter. But I think the state and the city need to do more to do right by the people who are...
I see in here when I come up to the space and like I said, I engage with just about every elected official in the state.
Um. Okay.
It's not really the most relevant to, you know, who might be there at a particular time. So I think.
We have known that I don't think there's ever been a day that the city has not had a city clerk, but there are many times.